Six o'clock. And lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. DeFazio, the roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell, here. Commissioner Coe, here. Commissioner Sarkia, here. And Vice Chair Reese.
Here. Okay, do we have any reordering of the agenda today?
We do not.
You? And that takes us to approval of the minutes from January sixteen. Does anyone have any revisions to those minutes?
No.
Um, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
In a second?
A second to motion.
Okay.
Okay, for the approval of the minutes, the regular planning commission of January sixteen, twenty twenty five, Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coe.
I.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I.
Commissioner Reese.
I.
Vice Chair Reese, sorry.
Uh, and that takes us to election of chair and vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Shannon as the chair. Grab a second.
I'll second the nomination. Thank you.
So, um, okay, for the election of Shannon Reese as chair of the Beelton Planning Commission, Commissioner Campbell.
I.
Commissioner Coe.
I.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I.
And Vice Chair Reese.
I. Do we have any nominations for vice chair? Anyone who's interested in serving as vice chair?
Oh, I'll do it. I'd like to.
I'll nominate Commissioner Sarkia as vice chair.
A second, the motion.
Okay, uh, for the election of Commissioner Sarkia as Vice Chair of the Beelton Planning Commission, Commissioner Campbell.
I.
Commissioner Coe.
I.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I.
And Chair Reese.
I.
All right, motion passed.
Great. That brings us to a public comment, which is an opportunity for members in the audience wishing to address the planning commission on matters that aren't on the agenda, can do so at this time. No action is taken on these items at the meeting, but please say your name and address for the record, and comments are typically limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comment?
Um, I haven't received any speaker slips, but, uh, okay, uh, no public comments tonight.
Okay. Looks like nothing's on the consent calendar. We don't have any continued public hearings. So then that would take us to new public hearings.
Okay, evening, Chair Reese and Vice Chair Sarkia and planning commissioners. Um, before the night is a time extension, so I'll just read out the resolution. Uh, resolution of the planning commission of the city of Wilton, California, approving a second one-year time extension. Two four dash T E dash O two request for final development plan eighteen dash F D P dash O two for the home to suites and Hyatt Place Hotels located on Mc Murray Road on accessories parcel number one three seven dash seven nine zero dash zero zero one and making findings and support thereof. So the time extension before the night is for the hotel project that's within the specific plan. It was fast approved, um, in twenty eighteen by final development plan. Originally, it was the, um, Campbell Hotel and a boutique hotel. In twenty twenty two, there was a new owner that bought the project and the property. Um, and now the brands are home to suites and Hyatt Place. So since that time in twenty twenty two, the new owners have been working through the process. Um, they've received one permits for the construction of the city. And then as of yesterday, have received good permits for the project. So last step back, good permits, which they've been working through the building permit, um, for those. And then they would have to complete substantial construction. Um, for the permit to remain valid. So all development plans, um, typically, or in our code, they would last for five years unless they were granted a time extension. And two one-year time extensions can be granted with final development plans. So the first of these time extensions was last year. Um, in February and a second and final one is here, uh, to get approved tonight. Um, what else is here? So a time extension can be granted by the planning commission upon showing of a good cause. Uh, staff as good cause does exist because of the ownership and delays in funding, um, financing with a difficult market. So staff is aware of any reason to deny the extension will be reasonable for the planning commission to to approve the time extension at this point. Uh, lastly, I'll just note that this approving of a reapproval of the project itself, just the validity of the permit. It's just extending the, uh, time that the permit is valid to, uh, it would be to February seventh of twenty twenty six. Um, if at by that time, the physical, uh, substantial physical construction hadn't been completed, then they would have to come back through the development process, uh, with a new application. So before turning it over to the commission for comments and questions, I'll just give the mic to Jen Jackman, the applicant, and she'll she wants to sort of.
Kara, thank you for having me here. Um, I bring greetings from the developers. I'm not the developer. I'm just their representative. It's relatively local. I live in Slope, but I've been down here a lot over the last couple of years. Um, but they're really excited as we're finally actually have at least one permit in our hands. Um, they have been going at this for a long time, and so they really, really appreciate the city. The city has been supportive. And everybody has been incredibly responsive and helpful. And so I wanted to say thank you for that. Um, you're a big part of this. And, um, the other thing is that, yes, Kara mentioned that we were able to get the grading permit in hand yesterday. So I think they were going to start grubbing, but they didn't because of the weather, but they're just really excited to go. So, um, thank you very much, and we're excited.
Thank you. So then we'll we'll go to, um, first commissioner questions and then, um, open for public comments. And then go to commissioner comments. I'm good to everyone. Is that how we normally do it?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Um, any, any questions for the staff or the applicant on this one?
I have none. What would be considered substantial construction?
It would be, um, the greater, the basically they're going to have to start vertical construction, so.
Any other questions? Okay, um, do we have any public comment on this item?
And we haven't received any online either.
Right, uh, any comments before we, um, take action? Okay, do we have a motion? To approve the time extension?
I motion to approve. Resolution number twenty five dash O one.
My second to motion.
Okay.
Okay, um, for resolution number twenty five dash O one, a resolution of the Beelton Planning, of the Planning Commission of the City of Beelton, California, approving a second one-year time extension, request for final development plan for the home to suites and Hyatt Place Hotels located on McMurray Road on accessories, uh, accessories parcel number one three seven seven nine zero 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 one and making findings and support thereof. Uh, Commissioner Campbell.
I.
Commissioner Coe.
I.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I.
Vice Chair Sarkia, sorry, and and Chair Reese.
I.
All right, resolution passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and that takes us to uh, other business, the Avenue of the Flag median three plans.
Okay, let me get up there. Okay. All right, thank you, Chair Reese and members of the planning commission. So um, I'm now, uh, encouraged to present the revised drawings for, uh, median three, our downtown park project. Um, Avenue of the Flag specific plan calls for this median to be a community space. It would include an amphitheater, park space, um, a community voting, public restrooms, and a town plaza. So. Okay. Sorry, hold on one second. Okay, so. Okay. Okay, so let me go to the next slide here. Okay, so median bar, um, is the large grassy median in the middle of the Avenue of the Flags. Uh, just note that to the east, um, the median is the, um, approved five eighteen project and just to the southeast is the Creekside project. So that can be right adjacent to the median. Um, median two is the city's public park area, that's to the north, and then median three is to the south. And the median four is then the, um, landscaped parkway, the drag plaza, and the veterans memorial. Technical difficulties, wait one sec. Okay. Okay. Okay, so the planning commission and city council have last seen these concepts in June and July of last year. Um, one of these meters, one concept plan out of two was chosen as the base, and certain revisions were directed to be made on the concept plan. So these are given, uh, amphitheater and amphitheater to face to the south, and that would be towards the open space. Um, here is to manage median two for the walkways and coloring material, and then, um, here those would be replacing the crosswalks instead of paint, and then also, um, where there's a blue in place of, uh, decomposed granite or DG. Also, the direction of open space, and so we replace some of the BG with more open space plus with others. Also, uh, the community restroom and voter to be separate voters. And then just more of an art deco statement. And then, uh, larger mark mature trees to start out. So I've been working, uh, since with a landscape design intern, Marana Bruno, who's gonna present, um, the concept and all the changes made in a little bit more detail. Um, and then I'll finish off the presentation after you're done presenting.
Take a look. Can everybody hear me well through the mic?
Yes.
Um, so, um, some of the modifications, um, or revisions for the plan um, here to pay attention to that are different from the previous, uh, concept. In the lower vignettes in this aerial view, um, would be, like Kara said, the amphitheater facing south. Um, that's to prevent any um, effect when sundown because it was facing, um, towards one of the east, the east or west sides. Um, and also, um, we have added, instead of decomposed granite, any pavement that is not the pathway would be, uh, pavers, art deco pavers in a bi-color scheme, cream, black, or white, black, gray, something like that. Um, in the town plaza in the vignettes below, you can see kind of like an arc of black and stars. Those would be, um, an area where the donor pavers could be embedded. Um, and then another feature that has been revised are the art deco furniture, like the planters and trash cans are intended to have a strong art deco, um, style. And all the furniture like seating and chairs, lamps, um, bike racks in art deco style. And like Kara said, community building and restrooms will be separated and separated also by this art deco paver style path, um, path or paving. Um, we can go to the next slide. And one thing I wanted to point it out to are the crosswalks in same paving as median two, I believe, same color and, um, style. Um, this is a ten, the path on the median is a ten-foot wide path that meanders. And the crosswalks here connect to ADA access. Um, we, we can notice here, um, the flags that face the south end, um, the art deco bench, the large mature trees, the buildings are on the left, they're left to plain white, open to art deco style discussions. And we can go, um, to the next slide. Um, so here, I also want to mention the paving is intended to be permeable paving. And, um, here we see the amphitheater facing south with that little building in the back that would be an attached storage, um, also slash backstage on, um, the right side. So that would be the east end, right, I believe. Um, we have access driveway with, uh, removable or collapsible bollards. Um, and we see also on, sorry, I made a mistake. On the east side, we see the bio swales with the bridges crossing over, and the bio swales will be segmented throughout, um, the median, so half north, half south, east, and we can go to the next slide. Here we see, um, one northwest view of the amphitheater with the open space, shade sails for shade, mature trees. Um, art deco style play sculptures, the seating and benches would be in that art deco style that we saw at the initial um, slide on the vignettes. Bike lanes to remain as they currently are. And one thing to note that is different is the paving, the path extends to the seating areas in this open space. And we can go to the next slide. Uh, here, there's a little bit more of the open space. We've and extended to more open space than last time. Um, and we can go to the next slide where we will see um, here, the main flag that anchors at the central part of the median. We have crosswalks in the center connecting to residential and business, um, crosswalks with the same paving. Uh, we will have food trucks on either side of the median uh, with vendors, vendors also with driveway access and retractable bollards. And the building that we see to the right would be the restroom. And we can go to next slide where we see here more clearly the flex area and the flex area, which is this, um, adjacent to the or in front of the buildings right there. Thank you, Kara. Um, is an area that's intended, um, for art display, um. Um, we also have community, uh, community bulletin boards, um, bench seating, um, movable planters in art deco style. And the path, the art deco paver here connects from the bio swell bridge to the path to the civic center and restrooms. And we can go to the next slide. Here we have a close-up view of the town plaza, a little bit of what it would feel like to be there or across the street, and we can see those round little circles on the grass. Those are, um, embedded lightings, so to create kind of like a light, um, more subdued light at night. Um, the signage is the existing and would have a little bit of more wayfinding for the town, um, plaza or the median features. And we can go to the next slide. And here we offer other options of where the flags could be positioned, either in front of the town plaza, grassy area, or in the back in the northern end of the town plaza, and those dark pavers that you see on the town plazas where the stars could be embedded, donor stars or donor pavers, uh, next slide. Another option is to have it with, um, safety buffers like bull bouts at the paved crosswalks. Um, it adds extra protection for pedestrians, also helps drivers to see pedestrians well. And that is it. Any questions?
Sorry, look, we'll go to questions. I just have a few more slides. Oh, sorry. Okay, so these options that we presented, the, um, plaza flags, the bow bouts, and now the art deco architectural styles, those are certain, what the council called menu options that didn't have consensus when we last, uh, presented this. And so we went back to, to hopefully receive some consensus to forward to council on those specific elements. Um, so the art deco, art deco architectural style, um, this is for the community and the restroom buildings. But art deco is really, um, a style that has a lot of different facets of the world. It's evolved, um, it was in its height in nineteen twenties through forties, but it evolved in the fifties and beyond. Um, art deco, you see a lot of a mix of stylized organic elements like plants and animals, and then, um, with more geometric forms. Uh, like zigzags, chevrons. Often the materials used are smooth, um, like stucco, uh, stone and metal. And then the style is really meant to evoke modernity, um. It reimagines some ancient motifs, uh, like in plants and animals, and then it embraces new technology. So that's really the theme of art deco style. So there's a bunch of, well, I'll give a bunch of different pictures, but, um, those are various styles of art deco. So here's adjacent projects of the five eighteen and Creekside. And there's a more of the classic, uh, art deco, and I'll go over that a little bit more on the next slide. So this is what is considered the classic modern, um, this is a in the twenties, thirties. Um, this emphasis is on vertical elements. You can see in the towers, um, the columns. And then you can see some of the combination of the, uh, stylized organic elements and then, um, with the geometric ones. Okay, so this is what is considered to be streamlined or art modern. And this really became, um, a style around world though too, and it was influenced by, um, well, by airplanes, the machine aesthetic, ocean liners. Um, so you'll see the rounded flowers, rounded edges, um, more of a streamlined look. Some other, um, elements. And less surface ornamentation than the classic modern, um. Some characteristic styles are the glass block windows. And actually, uh, this picture down here in black and white is in Wilton. That was on the Avenue of Flags at a gas station. Wilton does have some art deco history, I don't know. Just know already, but. Um, and then, uh, just to note, sometimes roads are a lot of, uh, lines and grooves in the wall. So as opposed to the, um, classic modern, or the emphasis is on the vertical, art modern emphasis is on. Uh, so the last new style that we categorized is the streamlined fifties diner style. And this has evolved from the streamlined modern style. Um, obviously it has the rounded edges, the more, um, streamlined metal, the futuristic kind of look. Uh, this room was shaped from and for the car. Um, this was a um, very capitalized in diners, um, just because it was an attention-getting, uh, but more of a standpoint was. Okay, and also just to note that art deco can incorporate, uh, local cultural elements, materials. So those are some examples of, um, local influences, um, from different places. So these two images here are actually from a town in New Zealand that is considered to be the art deco capital of the world. That's Napier. Um, these are is influenced by the Murrumbi culture, which is the indigenous people of the country. Uh, so some of those elements are like the modern art deco. Uh, the image over here is from Palm Beach, Florida. So obviously a lot of beach influenced um, elements and palm tree motifs that can be found in art deco. So Beelton's, uh, influences are seen in images similar to this with mission style influences. We could incorporate lash, treesh, um, influences in the designs. We could even have people's like, uh, motifs to represent vinyls, um, elements to symbolize equestrian ranching, car culture, you know, anything Beelton. So that can be over many of the three styles that what I want to look at. So with that, I will turn it back over to the commission, um, just to note that we would appreciate a consensus if possible, and we would see, I would, um, and I can read any of the sides just to put that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, both of you. Um, I think we'll, we'll start with, again, with questions. Is this, does this item have a public hearing? It's just.
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, yeah. So we don't have comment, then? Or we could just take it, just in case. Okay, and then, um, and then we'll go to comments and, and perhaps we close out comments by going through these specific three items, so that we can come to a consensus on those. So with that, um, do we have any questions? For staff?
Or come.
Yeah, questions first.
Oh. The, um, the restrooms, I don't remember the, uh,
The restrooms, I don't remember the uh. Uh the original plan being uh. Just blocks. Uh they. Why are they just blocks here instead of having any character?
Yeah, because we haven't left a character for them yet. So last time we presented the um, we're showing a certain art deco character. But just so that we can imagine different characters.
The character of the. But if you're not.
There hasn't been a consensus between planning, commission, and council for for a certain art deco style.
Yes. Well, our deco is the uh. Uh what we agreed on on the general plan. It was established a few years ago. Yeah. And I I like it.
Yeah, and it will be art deco, just to be clear, it will be art deco, just um there's different styles within the art deco that I. Just presented. So certain form of the art deco.
Would um five one eight and Creekside, would they be categorized by one of those certain architectural styles?
Yeah, they were the classic modern, um which was the first style.
Can I ask questions that don't pertain to those three items?
Yeah, oh, yeah, feel free to comment on any of the aspects of the project.
The median park, the parking around the median, is that? Just could be reserved for food trucks or is that for public, maybe for for events?
For the public, yeah, and then um just a couple of spaces we should. Um could be reserved for food trucks.
And what is this, the civic center? What will that consist of? It'd be like a tourist.
It's really up to council to determine what type of a use would go in. It's just categorized as a community or a civic.
Bigger building, the restroom, and they can kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
And. I look pretty familiar with a similarly bill fifteen seventy-two that was passed maybe twenty twenty-three. The summer door news somewhere, non-functional turf, we can't use portable water for city on uh. Land. I I think this. Is functional turf because it's like a picnic area and a playground, so I think that doesn't apply, but I don't know. You know anything?
No, but repeat the bill.
Uh similar to fifteen seventy-two. I think it was signed by Governor Newsom, maybe October twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. We'll definitely look into it.
Into. And then have you thought of any for the the play sculptures? Have we thought of any other designs, maybe like incorporating like you're saying some of the art deco elements like like like. Mountain lion or some native animals that the kids can play on or something like that. They find it cool.
Here, let me go.
I mean, I know. If you have in the design, they're just like rounded, which is nice and safe and. Which is good.
Yeah.
Little children, so yeah, we did.
But. Placeholding too.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, it's all conceptual, um. So here are just some. Conceptual. Place structures, but again, it's related to when we do the construction drawings. Um and the the council at that point will decide, but if there's a certain. Um. Certain elements that. Then a commission would want to recommend to council to consider, definitely feel free, but. Now, yeah, just in consideration for the construction drawings.
Or got some kind of like a split piece soup thing kids can play in or something or. Two mash hut or something.
Yeah.
Well, I I I think I heard that there was at one point that the civic center and the restrooms were one building. What was the thinking that to separate them?
Well. What was the thinking?
Yeah.
Do you want to answer?
Um, I I think I made that comment.
Yeah, but also some council members made it too, I think, um. If I remember, the concept was that it would give more surface area. Uh to the two buildings. And then it would just um. And it would just separate out a restroom, there would be public restrooms from the other building.
More opportunity for like some shading things around it or it did. Then both of them front and you can, you're not like hindered by having restrooms that can't have any real windows or. Softening.
Gotcha.
Expression. But that way, you know, one building can be like a focal point. But.
Yeah.
And will the grass area have enough square footage? Maybe like tents for vendors? Is that kind of the idea?
Yeah.
In between the paths. I see the pass, you want to widen up for maybe here's obviously is strollers.
Oh, yeah, that that was thought about the, so the path was also thought of as fifteen foot. But it reduced the open space, it reduced a lot of, so fifteen feet. You can house a lot of strollers, people in both directions, and it's more comfortable. But it reduces significantly the open space, so I think the consensus at the end was to keep it at. A ten-foot path so that we increase open space area.
And just to note too, that ten feet is really the minimum that we would want to see for um. Pathways and parks because five feet is the minimum needed for one way um for pe- two people to walk side to side. Together, so. Yeah.
Um last time you were here, there there was discussion of a potential funding source to use that civic building. Kind of for art display. Is that still on the table?
We did not get that grant. But we can apply um to other grants, and we have the arts and culture committee as well for future funding.
Great, thank you. Any other questions we have?
Sure. Um in terms of, I see the the flag positions, I know it's gonna come up. Um. I cannot think of, even though I walk by it every day, um it's not gonna be on this uh median four. Is there also significant placement of flags in median four?
Median four, those are behind, or what would be considered behind the plaza. So they're not up towards the front of near the street. On the um median floor to the south.
That's right. They kind of circle.
Yeah.
So you have the, you have the plaza.
Yeah.
And they.
There's military flag, service flag, and on the north, and median four, and it doesn't have circle shape, but. So that one, that aid area. And then the other end is just the American flag with the children's civilian flag. On the south.
Thank you, thank you, Kathy. It's good to jog the memory. Any further questions? Should be. Open for public comment? Okay, do we have public comment?
It's okay.
Um, good evening. I'm Kathy Breland, um live on Freedom Place here in Beelton, also with the Chamber and Visitors Bureau, so. I know I haven't met many of you in person, so it's nice to be here. Um just a couple of comments, because I know I've been kind of through this whole process with the visioning and everything, so it's nice to kind of see. It coming along in discussion. Um but something to think about um. With the benches, just because we're off the one oh one and we do have a transient population that comes through. Maybe putting some breaks on the benches so we don't end up with just. People lying on the park benches when we have our families and kids and stuff out there. So just something, I know it's minor, but just to kind of keep that in our. Minds when we're planning out the benches and because it's great to have them, but we just, I don't know. You go to cities sometimes and you see that, and it's just kind of a deterrent to want to take your family and people there. Um restrooms, I'm so glad, yeah, we need restrooms bad. We get asked almost daily at the visitor center for public restroom, so it's much needed. Um and then the with the styles, I mean, they're all, it's it's a hard decision. I know it's in all you's hands, but. Um just I, it's kind of hard not to not know what the use is gonna be for that might help with the, you know, what design to pick. If you knew what kind of the usage was gonna be, if you want a lot of windows or if a block building is fine or. Depending on what's gonna be, you know, what it's gonna be used for. So the other thing I thought too on the, and I think this was brought up at a previous meeting, um. But the backside of the building, um where the amphitheater is, if we could do a mural or something, or a welcome to Beelton. Or some kind of a cool mural on the back of that would look kind of neat, but. That's all just some comments, but anyhow, thank you guys for your time and getting through all this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think um. For comments now, it makes sense to go one by one. People probably have a lot of thoughts. Um would anyone like to start? I can start. Um. Just again, thank you, and and thank you for taking all of our comments. I know you got comments from ten different people, so. It's not easy to, you know, find a consensus on that for one. Um you guys did a really nice job. Um I liked where you moved the main flag pole to in the center. Um. The pavers look great, and also I really like the enhanced crosswalks. Um. I like the concept of the bull bouts for pedestrian protection, especially on. What is it? The southern end of the median. Um that would be nice on the the northern end as well. Um. I think the circulation is is better. I like that there's more open space. Um. The only thing that I noticed and and. This will obviously get studied studied later too, but where the bridges come directly out into the right away. I think there's a potential. Issue there. Um or yeah, for. Accessibility for one, and it. It might be that you could have it, but it would have to be stepped further back, and I don't, it it there probably is room to step it back, so.
It's it's not very obvious here, but um. I don't know if we have another side view, but um. Maybe from the town plaza. From um. Yeah, maybe there, I guess it's because. The previous one, well, it's not out very obvious there, but it was intended, there's this, um I'm gonna go to the screen. Um there's this.
Stepping curve here, and it's intended to be flush, like. Very, so somehow it would be built within that flush curve so that it doesn't have any height. But you're right, for giving access from that, it would have to be.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, thanks for, I mean, we appreciate that you're thinking about it. It's obviously something that can be tweaked and um it's studied further. Um. I personally prefer the. With the flag option, the flags that are further behind, I think it feels a little bit more welcoming, especially since we. On the other end have a building right up against the um the view, and I think a mur- a mural is like an excellent idea. Um. On that side, um. About the bolt out option. Um as far as the architectural style, the only one that I'm really opposed to is like the mission and colonial for one, because I don't really think it fits the. The color scheme that's like more cooler. A cooler neutral, more neutral um. Scheme, but. Um, I think with the smaller. Uh massing of these structures that that perhaps art modern is a a good choice, just because. Um. You know, you can have more detailing on it, and it won't feel. Undersized. We, if we try and do. The classic, we don't have a lot of vertical elements. I think it would be tricky to execute that well. Um. And I think that covers. The my comments. Anyone?
Good, thank you. No, thank you.
Anyone uh like to go next?
Okay.
I'll go. Um, yeah, I like Kathy's idea about a mural on one of the backs of the buildings. Um. I like the uh the new built-in sign that's out there on the. Um on one oh one on the north side. Instead of happy and uh pee-wee. Um. I like that that new sign. It's uh welcoming, so something something like that would be very nice. Um the lighting, I like how the. The poles are on the outside and it leaves the middle of the uh the medium open. But I would like to see the the light itself. Um. Um also shine the middle of the medium as as well as the uh. Um parking areas and the and these and the outskirts. Um. Um back to the buildings, um. I'd like to see. Uh. The design uh incorporated with the. Existing approved projects uh we have. Uh so that everything blends together. Um. And what else did I have on this thing? I think that was it. Overall, I probably like your plan. It 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 just. It's um, it's not all congested. At all. I like it. Look forward to it.
Um quick question, with the lighting in the middle, do you mean? Actual lighting in the middle of the median or to sign?
From the existing lights to have something pointed. The light pointed toward the middle. I don't think more poles would be a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Uh I did sneak in some comments in my question about the sculptures, so that. That that that'll stand like has some, you know, native incorporate the native sending his value things, animals and. Oh. Two mash hut or something like that, you know, um. The, what was the consensus on the flags? I think I think the median to the south has the flags in a similar fashion right behind, so it's kind of. It would be symmetrical to have them behind. Right, so I think that. Is that what you guys are thinking? Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, flags behind, that would suggest. Um, like it was a good idea to use the paver, it's very durable, it's gonna last a long time. Sometimes the G D act and. Road, you know, and then not look very good. Um I think it's plenty of lighting, restroom is a good idea, mural definitely cool ideas, but that's a great. Thing to incorporate. Bull bouts, yes. Um. Because, you know, it's straight flags, it's straight, it'd be good, but we want pedestrians eventually, and this is what you want to have a downtown thriving downtown area, so the bull bouts are a good idea. I'm thinking of the. So art modern, because the one-story buildings and that you said had the horizontal element kind of, so it's it would be good for a one-story building, it would. Um. Go well for those. Those two structures, because they're one-story horizontal, yeah, so horizontal, oh, it would be good. Horizontal around, so I'm more journal, I think would be best for those. Structures. It's about all, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh comments and a lot of mine come from. I have maybe some OCD issues and consistency of things, so. Um, in terms of, I think, what's the first? Can we go back to the image of the flags? Uh or like the one of the images where you see the flags in front? I'm also in favor of the flags behind uh the tree. Um one comment would be. Where the. I would like some space between three and three, so that this tree is kind of in the center and then kind of where the. And then, if that makes sense, so they're not kind of lined up like that, there's three to each side a little bit, so there's like kind of. Um, yeah, if that makes sense. Um. In terms of the bump out, um I understand the safety um. Thing, the other side does not have bump outs. Um I've checked and and median. Median four does not have any bump outs. It has very circular, similar to what is currently. On the designs, is that correct?
Um I, yes, that is correct. Medium two and three don't have the ball bouts, but I I will note that um. Five eighteen and Creekside projects will, and future projects are um. They have, but they have to have pedestrian safety features like whereabouts.
Very helpful, thank you. Um and in terms of the art deco design. I lean towards the classic modern, modern as well, um mostly to stay in line with the Creekside and five eighteen projects. I think there's. You know, I think the art deco. Thing that's in the general plan is an interesting idea. Um you know, it does bring a new character, but there are a lot of different characters. Already on. Avenue of the flags. Um we have some country character, we have. Some, you know, the Red Rose Motel has some Spanish character. Um I think it's time to start. Bringing some consistency um to the 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 bringing this i- idea to life.
I have one little comment to add, just I. I have one little comment to add, just, I thought that the, uh, the pavers, the donor pavers were really clever.
Like that.
And that could also be part of, um, future funding opportunities, um. Let me get to the slide where you see them. Okay. A lot of flipping through slides tonight, but, um, if that's clear at all, that these are little stars within the, the tiles, so these could be from, um, from others potentially.
Will names be on there or anything, or like?
Potentially, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any additional comments? Okay. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Bruno, for coming back.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank.
Okay, do we have any, um, written communications this evening?
Uh, no, we haven't received any.
Hey, um, any planning commissioner comments? I know we have the, um, library opening on Saturday?
Yeah, so there is the library, it's in the same property.
And if, anymore, any other? I'll just bring up. Uh, brings us to planning director report.
Um, I don't have anything tonight, other than just the, you know, the library opening, and then, uh, Planning Commissioners Academy, um, next, next month, on the sixth, through the seventh, okay.
The garden got a grant, I believe, I heard. Uh, for, so they'll be able to add more equipment and, uh, and whatnot over there. So that, that's, that's, that's nice.
Good news.
To go back to the academy, is it too late?
I, I can see.
Okay, so I know, yeah, okay.
If you want to, uh, yeah, I'll do my best tomorrow, yeah.
We'll keep in touch tomorrow because, yeah. Yeah, talk to some.
All right, great.
And colleagues.
Okay. Um, great, well then I think we are ready to adjourn at six fifty-two.